Pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would that everyone see we will start with Paul.
Mr. Story?
First.
Yes, Mr. Cockham?
President.
Mr. Case?
Yep.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
President.
Reading approval of minutes, please.
A copy of the minutes from September twenty-third regular meeting. There was a very, very tiny photograph there which we've already got fixed. Outside of that, I'm making a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yep.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes. Mr. property report, Mr. Gerolli?
I have purchase orders and nothing that takes in voting action, no action items, but I did want to update you all on the work that was done at the at the police department and hope that it takes care of the issue that John Ray got there. I got, I got there a little after they got there, they had already begun to work and all, and I did see one section that I was not happy with and I put in a change order for that. On the, on the east side of the building, they were going to just put a drain down with gravel over it and their, that main means that that wall would have been missing, so we went to break drains, what I requested, there was no change in mine, and it was good. And then when I went back to finalize the project, that's that the pop-up drain on the south or northeast corner is too close to the sidewalk, that was great in the winter time and my cause of policing hazard and slip, slip hazard, so I asked if they extend that, which they did. And so it's all taken care of. And this is something new that I'd never seen before, this goes on many tires in the building, the double side distance, the long side, side there. And then whatever the duty beyond that, it did maintain that that tarned us some better insulation and also, so if anything, the great drain is made of this as well. And I've never seen that before.
Cool, good, 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 now it won't rain until spring.
I know, I know, we're totally, yeah, it's a long process.
It'll rain soon.
And still changing some bits and stuff. I haven't really gotten numbers yet, but I went out and met with leading edge at the, at City Hall.
Excellent, thank you. Lower Streets?
I don't think I have any purchase orders tonight, I do have a little, little adjustment for Kenny Curly at Four Wardens, Palm Street. I make a motion to approve that.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case? Yes. Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
And that's all I have, man.
Code Delta safety?
I got one purchase order, two front tires for, for many plumber. Might rule out from one day, would fall and, and lock them up and flat it, so, tight spot, so, I make a motion for buy two front tires, two twenty-five seventy-nine, two forty-five for one thousand two hundred ninety-five thirty-nine, I'll make a motion to accept that.
I'll second.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
The next thing I have, and I'm glad to be saying this, discussion approval of barring our full-time firefighter off the current eligibility list. Mr. Palmer, our partner.
So I come in. Mr. Palmer, would you join me up here at the podium? It's my pleasure and privilege to swear you in, I'll have a copy for me to sign and a copy for you to sign them. If you could just raise your right hand, repeat after me.
Lady?
Yes.
That's a harsh name, I don't know.
Oh, see, I'm such an excited hire, this has been a long process, but those are normal, yeah. Make a motion to hire me, would you?
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
So, so this process started back in May, we're going to try and do this since May, right?
Yep.
Okay, are you ready now?
Yeah.
Mayor gets excited, so raise your right hand, just repeat after me, I Dylan Palmer?
I Dylan Palmer.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge?
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of position of firefighter?
The duties of position of firefighter.
For the city of Benton?
For the city of Benton.
And in the state of Illinois?
And in the state of Illinois.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
And he said his first day on duty is going to be Wednesday, and he's been a POC for some time.
Yeah, how long have you been a POC? Three years, three years.
So he's got seasoning already.
Yeah, Dylan started actually with West City Fire Department and had a few years there before he came over to us, so he's been a valued member of our department, active, and we're excited to have him.
Excellent.
Thank you. That's all I've got.
Council Finance, does anyone seem that excited about bills?
No one's ever excited about bills, unless they're being paid. We'll do payroll first. One payroll? And I got a giant spooky text. The spooky text should have been reserved for the bills coming out, but we'll do the payroll. We have payroll totaling one hundred and three thousand five hundred and fifteen dollars and four cents, with eighty-one thousand four hundred and nine dollars and fourteen cents for the general, and twenty-two thousand twenty-five dollars and ninety-three cents for our surrender fund. That's the payroll dated October eleventh, I make a motion to approve that as presented.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yep.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
I'm D, bills, yeah. Total four hundred and nine thousand four hundred and three dollars and twenty-eight cents, with five hundred and fifteen dollars and ninety-one cents for tip, nine thousand four hundred and seventy-two dollars and ninety-one cents for the MFT fund, and three hundred and ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty dollars and thirty-seven cents for the MFT fund. All that information, I make a motion to approve the bills as presented.
I will say.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yep.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
Item C, discussion and approval of year-end stipends for our employees. Last year we did fifty-dollar save-a-lot gift cards. I'm open to suggestions, I mean, I've been planning on pretty much doing that again, like we had done last year for all of our current full-time employees. If anybody have anything, that's kind of what you're pledging for, that's what we talked about.
Paid-on call.
I don't disagree with that, and the nice thing is though, it's, it's October fourteenth, not December, so we'll have the full-time employees taken care of, and then we can, because I think the biggest issue we have with our POC guys is, we may have some that only come to one call, and you've got your other staples that are there every season. So maybe work with, maybe work with the chief and see, you know, what, what makes sense for the majority of those guys and revisit that, and what we'll do is we'll revisit it two weeks from tonight, and we'll have all of that sealed up, and that way, I would like to get these out by the end of November before we get into the December season, so, I mean, you guys, any other suggestions?
No, that's all I, that's all my.
Fifty-dollar gift cards, so I'll make a motion that we, we provide fifty-dollar gift cards to save-a-lot for all of our full-time employees as a year-end stipend.
I'll second.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yep.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
And I don't have anything, I spent a lot of money, so.
Very good. Any, any things?
Couple things, Mayor, one is I'm not in the right place, and two, with being with discussion and approval of union negotiations, we have pretty tense, I was hoping to have a draft with you this evening, but they were unavailable today, so I'm making a motion to pay the discussion and approval of the police union associations, thank you guys, and hope y'all have that in the next meeting.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes.
Mayor, the only other thing I would take note of is the purchase order from the fire department, looks like she and Cockham got this and it was winter dawn, and there may have just been over, overbooking of sales tax with a hundred and two dollars and forty-one cents, so I'd just make sure that our minutes show that the actual amount of approval will not be a little twelve ninety-three thirty-nine, but instead it should be eleven ninety-nine eighty, and I would ask that, tell on you and she and Cockham to take care of that with S and S, not for.
Did it show tax on there?
One thousand one hundred ninety-nine eighty, so that's all, John, Mayor.
Under Mayor updates, many of you have seen Mountbitch Park is now a gravel parking lot. The street water department have done a great job of kind of getting as much work as they can done, the weather's been nice, so they've been able to get it down, they're going to start shooting levels and prepping for concrete, and as long as the, as long as the weather holds, they're getting to move back forward. Ben Aback, Kathy and Brian will be in that charge for us. The northeast parking lot has been completed, and the work that, you know, Coy and the guys have done is phenomenal, they actually gained ten new parking spots in that lot, because of the guys.
They did a great job, looks great.
So with every parking spot being crucial for us and losing some on some of the high-gotten interstates, American highways, it's nice to know we're adding some back in. This next weekend is the Halloween, upon the square, it's our Fall Festival, four to nine, Shannon R V B up there, all kinds of activities for all ages, and we're going to close down the two alleys on either side, which now happens to be next door to where we office and do work, so it's nice to be right downtown. That's it under updates, I do have one purchase order, and it's on behalf of our economic and zoning director, Brian Calcaterra, you'll see here, it's for a previous subscription for LinkedIn, when he went to Retail Academy, one of the things that they said is, the number one way for us to contact potential businesses that we want to bring to this area is through LinkedIn, it's a professional service, a professional way to do that, and so he's making a request for a purchase order, he's, I'm right here tonight, for an amount of nine fifty-nine eighty-eight, and this will allow him to have access and connecting and contacting people to try to bring those businesses into our community, anything to add?
That's a manual fee, and that is, as the mayor said, to locate, find real estate directors, tenant reps, developers and franchisees that have territory here, so we can contact and find the right people to, to show sites to.
Was this part of the twenty-five thousand that we pay is?
No, this is completely different, this is, this is just a tool to be able to locate the people that we need to be able to talk to in order to use those tactics.
You've got, and you, they tell you to locate, is that?
Uh, it depends on what kind of retail establishment you're, you're trying to find, a lot of different corporations have what they call real estate directors or tenant reps.
Correct, yes.
I mean, it's all together, correct, it's finding the right people to give the right information to.
And LinkedIn is the professional way to do that versus a Facebook or Instagram or an email.
And anybody can do LinkedIn, but the issue is, is that if you don't have the premium subscription, then you can't just contact, cold contact, you know, a real estate director for Chick-fil-A or something like that.
Here's a retail recruitment.
Yes, those would be a few words, that's a key.
I make a motion that we approve that she's approved with subscription for Ryan for nine hundred fifty-nine dollars and eighty-eight cents.
Mr. Story?
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes. And then under item C, this is Mr. Calcaterra, discussion approval application for a zoning change to property located at three twenty-eight South Main.
Yeah, and I think this one's a bit of a happy ending, honestly, if you remember several meetings ago, a gentleman came in wanting to purchase a building on North Main Street, to put a tree service, tree trimming service on, and it was my recommendation to not bring that permit, and he was not given the permit, and so, you know, I remember during his, his presentation, the one thing that he mentioned that he wanted to have for the city of Benton was that Main Street, Route thirty-seven access, to be able to have people see him in that visibility, and so from a zoning standpoint, I thought, you know, obviously the council agreed with me that we need to be somewhere that's zoned industrial, and there was really only one place in the entire city that could be rezoned to have an industrial zone, basically, you know, kind of further continued without spot zoning, and that was the property located at three twenty-eight South Main, which is the, it's Alan Newman's property. And so, Mr. Newman was gracious enough to talk to Mr. Bossberg and entertain an offer, and so I believe they're in the process now of hashing out an offer for him to be able to lease half of that property, and in order to do so, he would have to be zoned industrial, and for whatever reason, I actually assumed that property was already zoned industrial because it's been used in, in metal fabrication for probably thirty or forty years at that same location, and so really what this does is it cleans up zoning on a parcel that's been used as it, as industrial, and it allows for further development of a property that, as we kind of know, is falling into a nuisance, we'll, we'll just go ahead and say, and this provides an opportunity to bring this gentleman into the city, who was kind of under the impression that the city didn't want him, and now he has a place where he's going to, you know, basically be happy and clean up an eyesore, so I would definitely recommend rezoning this parcel for those reasons.
It's not, it's, Benton's what was zoned for this business.
Correct, that was, it was zoned.
That was, that was the problem.
That was the issue for me anyways.
But this was it.
This will be subject to rezoning tonight.
We got to, we got to.
Right, we couldn't have done that with Benton's.
It would have been spot zoning, there was no other industrial zone that was adjacent to this property, yeah.
So this was more an extension of a current zone, the other was like, just from scratch, you're kind of popping into the building.
And I believe I provided a zoning map that shows a parcel on there too, you can see the blue, it's the, or brown, or whatever color that is, is the industrial free zone. That would be my recommendation. It would be my recommendation to make a motion to rezon that parcel.
I'll make that motion.
For those parcels.
I mean, it's probably what, man, I'm excited.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes. Thank you. Item D and E, we're going to do in reverse order, we'll start with E, discussion approval of council resolution of support, this is for the Crosswalk Community Grant, that we had a meeting about a month ago here, and this room was front to back, side to side, full of people, this will allow Crosswalk to administer on the city's behalf, billing improvements to properties in the city of Benton, and so we need to approve a couple of things for them, the first point you see, it says twenty-four-ten, which really should be twenty-four-oh-nine, and it's the council resolution of support. Just make sure we do this in the right order, we need a motion and a second approval on that.
I'll second.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Mayor Masser Smith?
Yes, then you can see under resolution twenty-four-ten, item four there at the bottom, but it talks about we're ma, we're committing to match five thousand for the use, and the grant is six hundred and fifty-five thousand, so it feels like a pretty good trade-off.
So we have, we're, we're on the up.
Correct, that's all.
I'll make a motion to put a match to grant, five thousand dollars for local share.
Mr. Story?
Yes.
Mr. Cockham?
Yes.
Mr. Case?
Yes.
Mr. Gerolli?
Yes.
Yes, yes, so last thing under the mayor tonight, and I think I've had individual conversation with most of you, one of the things that we are trying to do as a community is foster new business development, new business growth, we've had a little bit of a challenge doing that, Brian brought back an idea from one of the TIF conferences about a year and a half, two years ago, and it's incubator program that we're looking at a parcel of property kind of around the square, it's basing, it's being based off of something in Berwin, Illinois, called Berwin Shops, and I love that these, these folks were willing to do this, we have Kendra Schott and Patrick Greenaker here tonight, of their near three, is that correct? In year three of their Berwin Shops experience, and so rather than us trying to help you guess the right answers, we've invited them to come and share a little bit this evening about their experience to present to the council, so I'm going to hand it to, to those two to kind of come and share for a little bit and answer some questions if we have.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having us, Mr. Mayor, it was nice when you guys came out and visited, it was a really great opportunity to, to share a project that both Kendra and I have been super passionate about.
Is that be fine? Yeah, is that be okay with the lights on?
Yeah. So as mentioned, my name is Patrick Greenaker, I'm from Berwin Development Corporation, so a real high level, Berwin Development Corporation is the corporation that handles Berwin's economic development, Chamber of Commerce, Special Events and Marketing for the city of Berwin, and with Kendra Schott.
Yeah, so I'll have you back and forth. Hi, I'm Kendra. We are the ones that lead this project, so we wanted to share, just high level, what a retail incubator is, why it's so cool and important for economic development, and then based on our experience, what the shops or our Berwin shops could look like, and then the program impact we've had already two and a half years.
So really the first thing, let me go over what a retail incubator is, so everybody sort of tech retail, or tech incubators, things like that, back in the pandemic, Kendra introduced a survey to our community, one of the biggest things that we heard back from our business community was there wasn't a lot of support for people who do pop-ups, farmers markets, sell on Etsy, make crafts and stuff in, you know, in their, their garage, so we were trying to figure out a way to, to help ease the burden of entering the market, testing their products, things of that nature, so, a retail incubator is truly designed to give smaller businesses an opportunity to test out the market at a much lower cost, so, really, like I mentioned, there was a gap in resources for startups, the other thing that we found out after we started this project, as mentioned, it's been about three years, it really helped our vacant, vacancy rate in the city of Berwin, so not only did it help small businesses, not only did it make community space, but it also helped put businesses into vacant storefronts in the city of Berwin, and then, it also, just because of the way the program, the newness, the excitement around it, has really drawn a lot of attention into the city of Berwin, not only has that attention come in the way of newspapers and news coverage, but also grants, and more excitement and stuff, and the opportunity to come down here and, and speak with you guys.
So you can see the pictures at the bottom, these are some of the products that we've had in our space, so, it's not a flea market and it's not resale, we want it to be somebody hand-making and doing their own makeup line, or someone making polymer clay jewelry, so it's all hand-based, quality pieces that are selected by our community. So high-level retail incubators can look very different, ours, actually run all three of these, but the one we're going to talk about is the one in the middle, so you're seeing two different sets of shops, mini storefronts with the boardwalk down the center, and there's so many people packed on that space, and that really shows that even from day one, this was like our first season kind of picture, from day one, we had a lot of community involved because they wanted to see businesses grow, and they wanted to see not the same thing over and over, but different types of businesses, so, anything from flower shops to candle makers, to pet clothing, to crochet items, you're really helping the entrepreneurs that don't have an outlet or a way to really test the market, do just that, so it's a, a temporary space that they get for about eight months, at least in our program, that they can test out if their product is the right price, if they have the right amount of product, and then real-time face-to-face with your customers, so, in general, the retail incubator is meant to help businesses grow, or at least talk to their customers instead of test online, and again, the goal is to support those entrepreneurs by lowering the barriers to entry, so, a lot of property owners that own commercial spaces want that three to five minimum lease, and a lot of people that have done pop-ups only or farmers markets only can't jump from selling in a six-foot table to a storefront for five years, and a lot of commercial property owners, at least in Berwin, don't necessarily want first-time business owners in their space because they're not a hundred percent sure of how it's going to work out, so, the goal is to have this incubator as that gap, filling that gap, to make sure that someone is able to test out their product, get a following in the community, and then eventually hopefully move on to fill some vacant storefronts, it also has become, as you can see in that picture, it's an event space, so it's really built up the pride in the community, and we use that middle space, we can either leave it open, it can happen during open hours, or shut it down like in after-hours, it's private, but it became a sense of pride for our community, and it draws visitors in, it's on a commercial corridor that's heavily trafficked into the, the city of Chicago, and then it provides market insight for us as developers on what's working in our community and what is needed and what's missing, and then for the business owners participating in this type of program, what works for them and what their clients want.
And so to follow up a little bit more on that, so as Kendra mentioned, it's to help local entrepreneurs and small entrepreneurs, so there's a lot of ways that we do that, one of the biggest ones that we heard from our entrepreneurs, we have people that are amazing at making acrylic, at making lotions and soap, and doing handmade wood, like wood products and stuff, but what they don't have really much of a, an idea about is how to run financing, how to source materials properly, we had one vendor who made candles, and every time she needed a new candle, she was basically going onto Amazon and buying a pack of three like jars at a time, at like five dollars a jar, where, you know, just a little bit of conversation with her, increasing her sales at the shop, she was able to then go drop that down to about two dollars a jar by buying in bulk, something that a lot of small businesses and business owners don't quite realize because they're focused on their craft, they want to really improve that, so the way that we've set up the shops in Berwin, there's twelve mini storefronts, these storefronts are basically sheds, so think about the shed in your backyard, they're twelve-by-fifteen foot storefronts, they're fully insulated, they're fully heated, A C, up in Chicago, in December, it could be forty-five degrees one day and negative twelve the next, so that was really important to us, we put them in a cohort style class, basically meaning, this cohort goes for eight months, all twelve of these vendors become family after those, you know, they, they fight like family, they hug like family, they get along like family, they don't get along like family, but they become, and then what they realize as they're exiting is, hey, this person next to me, when they move into a storefront, isn't competition, we got to work with them to do some stuff, we got to work with them to improve what's happening in our area, the other big thing too, that we really wanted this to be, and Kendra had mentioned it earlier, is that this become a community space, so, and what we mean by that is not only do we want Berwin, we call them Berwinners, we want Berwinners to feel pride in this space, we want Berwinners to have a safe place to go to, it's up in Cook County, we're right outside Chicago, so it's not necessarily always the safest, it's not wildly unsafe, but we want families to feel like they can take their kids, let them run up and down the boardwalk while they go inside and out the shops, so we really wanted to be community-based, so the best thing for us was to get the people who are going to be shopping there, Berwin residents, white, black, gay, straight, male, female, young, old, we select the vendors that come in, so, one of the most fun days and things that we really get excited for, because we're on this side and not on that side, but we do a, basically a Shark Tank pitch day, so the top twenty vendors who have the opportunity to get in, get to come in and pitch to thirteen of our community members, at the end of that day, we pick the top twelve out of those thirteen and we know who's going into the shops, just another way to get community involved in it, the other thing that we do as far as community selection and stepping into the next is onsite events, we truly encourage our businesses that have been established in Berwin to come out and use the shops, it doesn't matter if they're a state farm rep, or if they're a candy shop, or if they're a nonprofit, we invite them to come out and use the shop as a space to celebrate their, their customers, have them come in, come shopping, check out the new places, that actually then led into mentorship for our vendors by businesses that have been in business for ten, twenty, thirty years, they came in and said, hey, I see that you got a bakery here, we've been a bakery inside of Berwin for the last hundred years, can we work with them, can we show them the way, can we give them some suggestions and tips, and we're like, yeah, of course, come on in and, and show, show them what can be done.
I will say too, you can kind of see in these photos, the, sorry, um, so the interior are all designed by the businesses going into the space, so the goal is that, we do control the exterior, we don't want someone to repaint our neon-colored shops, but we do want them to really take ownership of their space, so you've got to think, everything we do with this program is a learning opportunity, whether it's talking to customers, learning your elevator pitch, redesigning your space, we did, in the first year, force them to go to Home Depot and learn how to hang drywall, so it was a lot of learning that we really threw them into, and the goal is to make them not necessarily experts by the time they leave in eight months, because there's a lot more to learn, but really exposed to the different challenges, issues, questions that they might have as their own business moving forward, so, what we've seen, because we've already had two of our cohorts graduate, all but one did graduate, one unfortunately kicked out, that's a whole different story, but the, the good thing is, is that we do track their progress, so, we're not just putting them in these spaces and wishing them luck, and we see them in December, we work with them, offering marketing support, making sure that we are promoting, they're cross-promoting each other, so they're building their own network, not just with us, but with each other, because we have twelve different businesses in one space, and we do try to make sure that it's not over lacking products, so that they're not splitting the customer base that walks on this space, we do ask that they keep the same hour, so the goal is, again, when you walk in, you see all twelve open, that only just improves your customer experience, and then we track everything they do, so, attend. So attendance, are they paying on time? Are they going to be a good tenant in the future for a business owner? Are they treating us and the customers nice? So just kind of everything. We kind of stocked them a little bit through the season. But based on everything that we've seen, we've not only had almost all of them graduate, but won several awards, which has really built pride in our community, including an international award we just got two weeks ago. We've had over eight already open their own spaces, not necessarily in Berwind, although we love that, we've had a few in Berwind. Some go on to open in Chicago, some are now in the mall, some are moving out west. We have a few that's already branching out, and they're in a couple different spaces throughout the suburbs. So it works, which is cool. We have several that's been on the news, and actually one was just on the News Friday because their stories are interesting. I mean, you're learning about businesses who started in basements growing into storefronts. And then there's a lot of giving back effort. So the top right show is just one example, but how the vendors themselves, how their passion influences their business, and then she gave back to our local hospital. So you're really seeing partnerships built, not just with the 12 that are on the space, but with our community, they're really putting roots in the community, and then we've seen them go on to be successful in the community, opening their own storefronts, one even in our downtown, hosting a bunch of them themselves, so.
And success looks differently based on what the business is. There's some people that want to go and be the next Jeff Bezos. That's not who we're talking to, that's not who we're working with. But like Kendra had mentioned, we have some that have opened up multiple locations. We had one family who, it was just a mom and her two daughters. They just wanted to go on the entrepreneurial spirit. They wanted to go on that journey. They were super successful. By the end, we're like, hey, we've got spaces for you, we want you to move in. They're like, no, we're good. The two girls were going to college, the mom was going away and retiring and just being done. But she really took, that family took away from it, hey, like we did this as a family, they gave that memory. So success looks wildly different to many different people, so.
We've also had businesses go through the program to decide business world was not for them. So, which for me is helpful and successful because then they didn't just sign a five-year lease, they're just out eight months. So we're excited about the program. We are in our third season right now with the fourth season applications launching next week.
Scary.
Exciting. On the floor, as you can see.
Yeah. So what we'd really like to show you guys is just sort of an idea to better get an understanding of what the shops are. So we got this short little hype video that we made this year.
Lights for this one.
So the one thing about Kendra and I is this has really truly been a passion project for us over the last several years. So we can literally talk, oh, you don't need that video. We can literally talk about this all day, but we wanted to open it up to see if you guys had any questions or thoughts, and if not, we can continue to talk about it for a few more minutes.
So just had it for the council's perspective, one of the challenges that I've seen about the last year and a half being there, you see a lot of empty storefronts on the square. A lot of challenges that I'm finding is those owners of the storefronts don't want to take a risk of what I call a 1.0 new business just getting started. But if they knew there was an established 2.0 that gone through a year of a program like this with proven financials, proven sales, proven leadership, proven everything, that those organizations, those business owners are willing to invest and take those on as tenants. So this is almost kind of a screen board for future opportunity. And I'm not worried about stealing other businesses from other towns. I would rather generate entrepreneurial spirit and raise up from within. Those people want to be more involved in what's going on in our community and in our town. And the hope is that this could be a generator for developing all kinds of life back to our square. But then also when people think of, they may think of something like this as a destination to come to when they come to the council today. So that's my little bit of pitch, so questions, feedback.
Surprise.
So, yes.
Yeah, so it can vary as much as you want. So we've had, we've worked with other communities in our local area. Some of them where it maybe took two years, two and a half years to get it going, but they got a whole bunch of donations and what we call in-kind partnerships, where the landscaping company comes in and donates the landscape, and a construction or a contractor comes in and donates the time. So then you've got materials, things like that, that you are covering. So with ours roughly, we put ours together in about seven months. Our executive director doesn't like to move slow, and he'll throw cash at a project to get it done. So we moved through in about, in about seven months from groundbreaking to the full-blown shops. And we were somewhere in between, and this is everything, construction for the concrete pad, the fencing, the security, the lighting, the wifi, the electricity, the heat, AC. We were sitting somewhere in between like $18,000 to $22,000 a unit, but that's just year one. After that, they're already built, they're set to go. Kendra can speak a little bit to the actual financials on how much we bring in on that?
So seven of them jumped in. So they have corporate partners.
Yep.
Now some they fund themselves. So the corporate partners, SBCs, banks, other institutions. So a number of those corporate partners have come along as investors to the program.
100%.
One of the things that Brian and I are looking at, and some of the properties we're looking at, would be potentially in a Tiff district, so that Tiff could help offset some of those expenses as well. So he and I have already talked about, how do we scale this? I met with somebody today, talked about applying for grants, and there are grants specifically for this type of incubator program. So I think between all of those, my goal would be that it would be a financial burden to the city, but it would be one that it would be an add, not a takeaway from a finance standpoint. But go ahead and hit your numbers.
Oh yeah, no worries. So we're working with another suburb nearby that theirs is about 4,000 a unit. And the reason it's such a big difference, one, we're learning on the fly. So we did like a unique size that isn't standard from like Home Depot sheds, so 12 by 15 isn't one of the most normal sizing. So a lot of custom stuff obviously increased the price. Concrete's something that we did that isn't necessary, so there's some things that we could change. But I will say, one of the impacts that we didn't talk about, this project was so successful with partnerships and grants and things that we started asking all our vendors, just what is your sales data? And it's anywhere from like 400 a month to almost 9,000 a month that they're getting, which not only generates sales tax and all that, because it used to be a vacant lot, nothing there for 15 years, but it also sparked two other retail incubators, and those combined have already made well over $300,000. So.
In a year.
In a year. So it's cool, like it's helping businesses not just learn, but it's not a detriment on us as the organization or the city for building out this kind of space.
What is the population of where these are at?
So Berwind is a super unique space. So we're 4.4 square miles at 60,000 people. So we got a population density of about 15,000 people per square mile. But there's other communities, like where we were inspired from Batavia, they're about the quarter of the, quarter of the population, maybe twice the, three times the actual land mass. And they've been running strong now for about five years with their program, getting new vendors in, continuous growth seen there. So there are communities that it does, it becomes an event for people to come to on the weekend. So families from, we had one vendor, she did vegan cupcakes. So we're about an hour and a half away from Madison, Wisconsin. She, every Saturday, had about a dozen people who literally drove down from Madison down to her space just to pick up her cupcakes as they fell in love with her shop so much. And then from that, that then turned into more, more sales on the market. So people do come in from all around to visit the shops.
Are these on, these skid-type units, where they're movable as needed?
Sure.
Expansion and all that?
Yeah, so that's one of the places where Kendra was mentioning that we got a little extensive. We basically designed these pieces, so the city donated the land to us, and we wanted to make it, if the city ever wanted to redevelop or to sell it, we could be able to take them down and put them back up. So we basically made them IKEA, so all the corners attached. But there's no reason why you couldn't go and pick up something from Home Depot off the shelf, put them on flatbeds and load them with skid stairs.
Do you guys allow, as far as occupancy goes, do you guys allow, like I noticed a coffee shop, where people, is it a to-go style only? They don't allow like occupancy as far as inside, they're sitting down, eating, drinking, or they do?
No, not really. So we do work closely with our health department, our fire department, and the city to make sure we're not the head city. So we do have some people that have like a chair in their space, but the goal is really to go in, shop, buy, and then remove yourself so you're not just standing and blocking the walkway. So it's all EAA compliant, but it is only a 12 by 15 space, so maybe one to three people is enough.
And then as far as like food and stuff like that goes, it's going to depend on what your code is. But for ours' example, the coffee is all pre-roasted, and then they just come and grind it up and do it. You probably saw a couple bakeries on there. Anything that is food-wise has to come from a commercial kitchen already prepackaged. So they're not like cutting you a slice of cake, or cutting your bagel in half and putting cream cheese on it. All of it's prepackaged.
Because you're a cheesecake vendor now, that's what she's doing.
Yep. So we have a couple of commercials, we're lucky enough to be so close enough to Chicago that there's actually like commercial kitchens that are helping small bakeries and stuff like that get off the ground.
Secondary retail.
Exactly.
But we do encourage people to hang out on the space because that only encourages them to spend more, which is great. So we do have like benches along the path. So it's built out like an event space, we just don't want people hanging out all the time in the space, like in the mini storefront.
Are they powered individually for electric?
Yeah, they're wired with electric, each has like an AC heater, they have wifi. What they don't, all have is running water.
None of them do.
What'd you say?
None of them do.
None of them do. Because we then wanted it to be able to move and not like connect into our water and sewer. We do have a bathroom trailer that is connected, so the bathroom is, but nothing else is to water.
And each unit has two breakers in the centralized breaker box that's not in like one of the units in there.
Were you okay with Berwind, which is a Chicago suburb? And Batavia's not that far from there. Do you have any in South, in Central Illinois or Southern Illinois?
You guys would be our gamepigs.
Yeah.
So I think that's, that's one of the questions we were talking about today is, obviously those are common, that's the tier of weight and your density, is this is one of the first times we're talking about, how would you do this in a rural setting? So it could have a slightly different look and feel, and they were talking about combining some other experiences. Could you bring the farmer's market to it and have it tie in with the farmer's market? Could you provide opportunities for music or other kinds of art activities? So I think this would be the foundation, if I'm saying this correctly, this could be the platform that you add other things to that makes it scalable for our size. Really, our reach is, what Brian's found, our reach is about six miles outside of Baton. So we're looking at the totality of Franklin County, and how do we bring Franklin County in? But I think if the word got out, you'd see your decoy, your mom, your aunt, your Mary, and some other neighboring towns, because no one else is doing this.
And I will say, you don't have to start with 12. Like we have 12 spaces just because that's what fit on our space. But we've had some that do six, some do eight, some do 10. It just really depends on what you want it to look like.
And they've become sort of destinations as is. Like we've actually talked closely with Batavia. Batavia's probably about a half hour away from our space. And getting a trolley that picks people up in Batavia, they go shopping in Batavia, and then they hop on the trolley and come shop at the shops, go to a couple of our other retail stores and sort of do that circle. And we've gotten, we've gotten excitement, we just haven't been able to pull together just bandwidth on our team to organize that, we haven't been able to do it. But there's definitely other pop-up markets that happen inside Chicago that have been like, hey, let's come out and do this. We've had cyclist clubs come out and ride out. We've had Berwind senior citizens, they came in on a Friday morning really early, they got bussed in, bussed to all three locations, did a bunch of shopping. So it truly does become a community, like pride and a community space.
Weren't they doing those pop-ups like in the vacant malls?
So there was some talk about that, like ways to use the malls. And selfishly, we were able to take advantage of some of the vacant malls because one of our big partners was a local mall that was closing one of their retail stores, and they actually donated six truckloads, U-Haul truckloads of like fixtures, tables, glass trays, glass shelves, stuff like that for us to use and share. So again, when it comes down to the money and that sort of side of things, depending on how hard you want to hustle and how much work you want to put in, a lot of it can get funded. There's another county, McHenry County. Based on their rough math, I just did the little stalking on Facebook, but they were able to raise over $650,000 in cash in one year to build out theirs. And that's not including any of the in-kind donations.
Thank you very much. You answered a lot of questions Brian and I would not be able to answer. And they do have some subsequent meetings tomorrow morning, and they're just planning to go to Rotary tomorrow, so we've got to hear for another 14, 16 hours. And we're going to have them just keep sharing their stories, so thank you all very, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving down the agenda, anything under miscellaneous business from the council?
That's one thing, Mayor. Couple of weeks ago, I was in conversation with one of Park Board's members, and the park had their iParks inspection, which happens every three years. And I know it's not our park as far as the way we manage it, they're a tax collecting body, but they're our community park. And we have a Linux park, and iParks agree. The inspector that, the representative that handles all the parks based with Coria Sau, did his three-year inspections, did the community park, spent a couple hours photographing grounds, hall fields, all of that. They got 100 in their rating. It doesn't happen. So when I found out about that, I had told, I had talked to Sarah Sauers, and I'm like, I want more information on this, want to share it because that's, that's a big deal. I mean, our park is, our park is very nice, and for them to score 100 considering all the parks that are members of iParks is, I mean, that's.
Scooter, this crew does.
That says something. I went through there today, and I talked to Scooter for a little bit, they were falling some trees and just double-checked some of the stuff that he had sent me to talk about tonight. But like that's, you know, I wanted to brag on them a little bit for that. And I mean, it's amazing the amount of time I spend shooting out there and the people we get from out of town who are always talking about how nice our park is. We have some, I mean, that park district and our citizens should be really proud of the park we have.
I agree. Good deal. It's awesome.
Any old business from the council? Any new business? Or any management public?
I'll just go ahead and read, we were discussing it a little bit earlier, but I'm just going to read what I have. I'd like to voice my opinion on something that happened to me recently. My average water bills are around $90 a month. Well, my September bill was $358.44. So I called the water department and was told that there was a leak at my address. They came out, the water department came out to my house to check the meter and said it was fine. That the leak was somewhere between the meter and somewhere in my house. I called back and asked if there was anything that could be done, and I was told to pay the bill. No reductions or credits are given by law. So I had a plumber come out, and after the inspection was done, I was told that the leak was underground, not in the house. And after two and a half weeks, my entire front yard and side yard were torn up to replace water lines with a price tag of $5100. After doing some research, I come to find out that the city of Benton paid $1 million for a new metering system, which also is supposed to send alerts when there is abnormal water usage at a given address. I was never alerted. Furthermore, the leak went on, the leak never went into the sewer, but I had to pay the full bill. Then I found out that there is a bill reduction for sewer charge for those people that are filling their pools. Again, my leak never went in the sewer. So while an underground leak cost me almost $6,000, some people were enjoying their pools at reduced rate. And a portion of my next bill will include some of that underground leak. And this just makes no sense to me whatsoever, how this is a law in this county. In my opinion, the bill's been paid, I'm moving on, but I just don't think it's right.
That is something that even as a council, we had some conversations about going back and revisiting the addresses. So that is already our radar, and it's something that we've talked about that we need to revisit ourselves. So you're confirming and affirming something that we already know's an issue of these.
Yeah, I talked to Damian, and he said the only way it's going to be changed is if you come to the council meeting and bring it up.
And that's a good thing.
Do they have your email address, because they will notify you, but I believe it's by email. What they do when they come in the morning, they look if there's any leaks that they, that's more than ordinary, use is more than ordinary, then they will actually contact you, and they will tell you you have a leak. But I think it's by email.
I would assume they have my email, but the thing that puzzled me, the way Damian explained it to me the other day, was that on your computer or whatever, it showed three leaks, three separate days. And I think he was explaining that it's a day in arrears. So these leaks were never enough to jump that alert, but in total, they were. And that made no sense to me. If there's an alert period, notify somebody.
Well, it's not a perfect system, I'll admit that. We've had some issues with it. We're the first one to add, and I'll deny that.
Thank you.
But I do know that I have been contacted before, phone calls, emails, if there's a periodic reading. So that's the only thing I can tell you, that's what I do like about the system.
Well, you can answer what happened in the past, I can talk about what our plan is moving towards.
Oh, I know, I'm moving on, I just wanted to voice my opinion on it. I think that. I think that the system that you have is terrible. That's all.
Appreciate you sharing. Thank you.
Very much. And you did so very well.
After spending a million dollars for it, it is terrible. We had no reduction in the workforce. There were no savings whatsoever. What was supposed to be billed as a benefit to the citizens because they will know when they have a leak, but on farce. And this here is just another, I said farce on the public. Just remember, you won't, you won't even give them a break on their bill when the sewer is not receiving the water. But we are giving a break on the one percent people here in Benton's got pool. If you can afford a pool, you can afford the water. And while we're on a million dollars, last time, which I guess that was been a month ago now, Mr. Case, I ask you, where are we at on the sewer plant? Seems how? We were given high rates to pay on a fourteen million dollar sewer plant. EPA cut the bill in half to seven million. And at the time, we had two million, uh, part of that one point two million that was taken out on this water stuff. If we put on that, we'd only go five million on the sewer plant, the thing would have been paid off by now. So again, I want to ask you, when is this thing going to be paid off?
I just saw a bill from, I just saw a bill from the treasurer. I think it was two or three weeks ago because we will make the payment in November. We pay twice a year on, on the wastewater treatment plant. We will make a payment in November. Yes, I think we will make in November with them. I don't remember what the, what the total amount was, but I can get a copy of that bill and I, I just don't know off the top. I, I know that I've seen it. I know that we're making the next payment in November. I don't know what the outstanding balance is.
How long? That's what I want to know. How long do the citizens have to keep paying high rates for something that we gave away millions of dollars out of the account to the water side? We paid high rates where they, they kept raising them, forced to pay a fourteen million dollar bill and then we, uh, we got forgiven half of that. So when do we pay it off? That's, the public would like to know.
So I mean, like I said, I'll get that information from John and see what the payment is and what our expected payoff date is. I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, like I said, I'll give you a month. Where's, what's the timeline on this one? Next, next meeting?
No, I could probably get you an answer at the end of the day tomorrow.
No, I want it tomorrow, because I would like for you to talk to the public with.
Okay.
Uh, well, I did good there. I picked up a pair of two or three right there for that one million bucks. And Cindy Hall, where are we at on cost on this?
Well, Kathy had already shared that we don't have all the estimates in yet and she met with leading edge today.
I don't, I see you're messing with the piece of insulation?
Um, no, this had to do with city, the, uh, police department.
Oh, okay.
That, that had to do with some drainage.
So by the next meeting, we'll have an idea of what's going on with this.
And I've contacted several remediation and causation people to come in to see what it's going to take to bring that building back to where we can occupy it again. So in the process of that, unfortunately, I don't have any control on how long it takes them. They send the eyes out and they do the, you know.
But the only thing that's nice is the vendors get bids.
They take all the information, but getting the numbers back comes in this, this slow, a slow process. And I've even called and said, you know, it's been several weeks, I haven't heard anything.
How long it took us to get the police department?
Yeah, that was a long process.
That was a long process and this is ten times that.
Yeah.
What would be interesting is whenever you finally get those bids on, uh, getting the mold and builders and everything corrected in this thing, uh, putting all the construction and repairs, the purchase price, put it all together and just see where we're at with this.
Well, that, that's exactly what we're planning to do. That is the next step.
Whether the two-hundred-and-eighty-thousand-dollar building.
That is the next step. So that, that's what we're working towards and that's what Kathy's working on. So, but we can only work as fast as we get information back from the, the vendors that we're trying to get bids from. So we're kind of at their mercy limit, but she's staying on top of it.
So at the first of year, we're going to be trying, or are we going to do it? Switch over to where if you get a water leak and you turn it in, they can drop the sewer charges on it.
We don't have a timeline. We're, we're going, we're going to look in, into it. I don't have any, I don't have any, any type of, when, when we're actually going to, going to do this.
I always like commitments from our new maybes.
Well, not every, not every, not every water leak results in, I mean, if your toilet leaks, your water.
That's the only one you have.
I mean, that, that is the only one.
Yeah.
I mean, that is the only one, but that's not, so to say that I had a water leak and I get a sewer adjustment, that's not exactly one size fits all, but I do completely agree with you. That's, I think, not the best one.
The idea of that thing.
That's why I'm saying.
The idea of that was water leak or so.
Right.
Letting you know whenever you're using excess water is fraught, though, because I go out and I'll water all my trees for ours at the time. I've never been notified that excess water is being used. The system doesn't work.
I mean, I, I, and I can, I can one hundred percent with all certainty, that is not entirely correct. This would have been two or three years ago. It was before I ever even thought about pulling a petition to be on the council. We got a phone call, we had a water leak.
Yeah.
And, uh, we actually replaced our water line in two thousand and fourteen, um, because I had just gotten back from my first anniversary trip and we were, we had a leak and that was before we went to remote re-meters. So it was, you know, I had water in the cellar.
Old system was best in the name.
And we got it fixed, but when we had folded it over. It finally broke loose and we had a pinhole leak. That got just gradually bigger, gradually bigger. And we woke up to a phone call from Melissa one morning.
They, they, they did notify me, but they did tell me that on their computer or whatever they look at the water department, that I was losing ten gallons an hour. That's a leak. That's not a pinhole.
No, 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 no.
And again, you were notified under the old system.
No, no, no. I was notified, I mean, this, this last notification, I mean, I've had two water leak instances. One, which was back in two thousand and fourteen, which was in the old system. And then the leak that happened probably three or four years ago under the new system because we got a phone call from Cindy Hall. We got, I mean, I got Jennifer, my wife, that's the, the, the bill was under Jennifer's name. My wife got a phone call from Melissa out of the gate, you know, eight, eight-thirty, hey, you know, we've got a notification that you have a water leak. So I went outside, made sure everything was shut off, looked at my meter, there's my leak indicator moving.
I had an outside leak before the system was put in and when I got notified is when I got the bill for like three hundred dollars.
That's exactly.
And I bought, I bought. And then I went up and checked on it, didn't know it, didn't know what's it running. So that, the, the new system works, I'm, I'm telling you.
Well, it doesn't.
It's not.
I mean, they notified when you take this water.
Nothing is.
Well, Tom, I water my garden. I mean, come on, I, I don't, I use water, but it, there's a difference. There, there, there's a big difference. You're out watering flowers and.
If you're guarding it to one time, one day.